Okay. I'd like to call to order the Avalon City Council meeting of Tuesday, October 7th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I would just like to have a moment of silence for the passing of Barbara Brucker Tyler. Are there any announcements or written communications?
Roll call.
Oh, why? We've been sitting here so long, I figured everybody knew we were here. No, I'm sorry, Kathy.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Here.
Councilmember Ponce?
Here.
Councilmember Schicklin?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Lavelle?
Here.
Mayor Marshall?
Marshall, me. Here. Announcements and written communications?
I have some information regarding the statewide special election on Tuesday, November 4th. LA County has begun mailing out sample ballots, voter information guides, and vote by mail ballots. The vote center will be the parish hall at St. Catherine of Alexandria's Catholic Church. They will be open on the following days and times, November 1st through November 3rd, 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Election Day, November 4th, 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Just a reminder, there are multiple ways to return your ballot, one being the dropbox available October 7th today through November 4th until the polls close at 8:00 p.m., in person at any of the 250 vote centers throughout LA County, and by mail, it must be postmarked by November 4th. Additional information can be found at www.lavote.gov and at www.cityofavalon.gov.
Righty, Department head reports?
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council members, and city staff. Jackie Cordero, Public Works Director. Public Works is finishing up several projects that have been lingering for the past several months. We finished the Phoenix communication system at Three Palms. Yay. The Sombrero Fountain is in testing mode, but I'm sure some of you saw it. It's gorgeous. We're just doing some finishing touches on it. The scoreboard is currently being assembled and should be going in soon, and we placed beautiful delineators at the elbow, and they're especially gorgeous at night. We're making good progress, but like everything here is because of the island factor, everything gets, is a little slower. We're starting several new projects for the off-season, refurbishing the casino way benches with MKS, guardrail on East Whitley, renovation of fuel dock restrooms, and renovating the Green Pier Women's restroom. We're also doing routine projects like repairing and replacing pavers on Front Street, fire hydrant repairs with Perk, and doing pressure washing on Front Street, alleyways, benches, sweeping in the mornings like always, landscaping, and yeah, normal routine. Any questions?
But those delineators, but feedback is really, really, really positive.
Yeah.
Agreed. The color scheme really works. Thank you, Dave. Thank you.
Thank you. You guys know the routine. We're here every two weeks. I don't know what the holdup is. Do you need a number when you walk in the door?
The fire chief's not here, and that threw everything off.
Yeah, it feels good to be second for once. First loser. Since, so in the month of September, Sheriff's Department had, I'm sorry, my name is Captain Matthew King. Hello, Mayor, hello, City Council, hello, city staff, I apologize. Just lost track today, it's very difficult for me to get, you know, move forward. So in September, we had 683, or actually, log entries for our deputies. 536 of those were observations made by the deputies, and 177 were calls for service. There were 44 traffic stops, 19 pedestrian stops. Out of those calls, we had 14 arrests. Five were for felony domestic violence, one was for misdemeanor domestic violence, one was for arson. We had a petty theft arrest, we had an arrest for DUI, a battery arrest, a drunken public arrest, unlicensed driver, and a driving on suspended license. So fairly busy month for us. Good news is I just got approved for two new deputies from the county, on the county side, so they'll be starting, should be the first Sunday of November. So they're both Spanish speakers, and both are long-term patrol deputies, so they'll be, you know, nice to have. Any questions?
So, because this domestic violence, I mean, five was a lot. I know it's been three weeks instead of two, but, so they get arrested for domestic violence, and then what kind of happens to them? What services, what do we, what do we do with these folks?
We talked to the, well, in a domestic violence, there's always a dominant aggressor, and, you know, basically the person that's not going to jail. Doesn't mean that both aren't suspects, but we always take one person to jail on every single domestic violence for the most part, unless it's, doesn't rise to the level of a penal code of either felony or misdemeanor. But when they're, the person that doesn't go, and even the person that does go, sometimes they get, for one thing, they're always offered to get a temporary restraining order, and that's something that we just do as part of our policies, and the judges almost always approve those. And we also refer to them with, there's a victim's bill of rights, and there's a victim's services as well that help domestic violence victims, and we give them their contact information. We don't really have stats on who's really using it or not, but they are offered those every single time. For whatever reason, though, these, there was like, two of them were locals, but the rest, out of the five felonies and one misdemeanor, were visitors to the island.
Too much to drink and that kind of thing?
I'm sorry?
Some of them are just too much, they've had too much to drink?
Yeah, there's, you know, alcohol is a big, it's usually an issue or always an element of domestic violence, so it's very common.
Any questions?
Yeah, so when you do the temporary restraining order, do the people, if they're locals, do they have to go over town to make that real, or does the whole process happen, initiate and happen here?
No, for the temporary, we call in, and we talk directly to the magistrate, and they issue it over the phone, and then we, while they're in custody, we give the person being, if they have any order against them, we serve them there in the jail. And that lasts for 30 days, and then after that point, they have to, and usually what they do is when they go to court for the case, where they either go to the prelim, or typically not the arraignment, but prelim or other parts of the system, they can ask for a full restraining order. That's, you know, just how it works. But yeah, they have to go over town for that.
Right, but good, so I'm glad that they can get the temporary without having to go over town. I'm glad you serve them here and all that stuff.
Yeah, it's just a phone call from us. And when it's domestic violence, I've, I've been doing this for 28 years, and I've never had one denied.
Cool, thank you.
Thank you. You, you, everybody's been very busy there.
Now I can see you. Okay. Good evening, Mayor, and members of council, Kevin Schmidt, Harbor Master. So obviously October's here. Personally, my favorite month of the year, beautiful weather, so even with that, our boating traffic's slowing down, obviously, but there are still quite a few boats out there. We have Jazz Tracks the next two weekends, so that'll bring some boats over. Right now, we're getting ready for the next, you know, fall season, wintertime, we're getting the harbor ready for that. Tomorrow, we're going to take the unfloat and the shoreboat, disconnect them from the pier, put them on moorings, and by the end of the week, they'll go over town for the winter. So after that, we're going to work on fuel dock float, the club docks, the swim lines, the canoe floats, so all those things have to happen in the next week and a half to two weeks, so that's what's going to be happening out there as we get ready for fall and winter. Looking at our stats, so for September of this year, we had 2,055 arrivals, we had 6,802 mooring nights, which is just a little bit over last year, so about the same. So we're doing about the same as we did last September in those numbers. In terms of other stats, we had, since the last time we met, we've had three Baywatch assists, 10 medical calls, 10 enforcement calls, 60 public assists, and 173 security patrols. So tomorrow, well, so we have a cruise ship tomorrow, in case you guys haven't heard, we had a redirect of the panorama being tomorrow because of the weather off of Cabo. They've got a pretty big storm out there, so we will have one tomorrow. Any question?
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. David Hart, Community Services. Jazz Tracks is returning for its 38th season, and we couldn't be more excited. Over the next two weeks, the sounds of smooth jazz will be filling our air. We're getting ready to welcome 1,000 fantastic fans and world-class artists. We'll be packing the iconic casinos, our hotels, and local businesses. Jazz Tracks is more than just a concert series, is a beloved legacy event and a very high note of the year for us. Mark your calendars. The Community Service Department and Avalon Schools are teaming up to bring you the Fall Carnival on Friday, October 17th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. We're taking over Front Street for an evening packed with thrilling games, delicious food, and awesome entertainment. And what's a party without a soundtrack? Local favorites hot off the range will be serving up some fall tunes, so please come down and join us for the festivities on October 17th. We've had a great start to our Avalon Football League, Flag Football League. The season began this Sunday, bringing together 48 energetic 3rd through 8th graders. We're happy at the fact that we've been able to bring back the 6th through 8th grade group this year. The numbers were down, our numbers are up, and they're trending up for kids starting to really participate in sports again, so we're really looking forward to the next soccer season, basketball, and T-ball programs trending in that direction as well. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Jocelyn Francis, Assistant City Manager. A reminder that Saturday, October 25th, from 8:00 a.m. to noon, will be our bulky item drop-off event, household hazardous waste, tires, sharps, you name it, we'll take it on Saturday, October 25th, again, 8:00 a.m. to noon. Just wanted to give some kudos. Today, we hosted 35 attendees from the CalCities Conference for our pre-conference tour of the island and city presentation. Many of them had never been to the island before, so it was really great to meet with other city nerds and talk about utilities and infrastructure and projects and programs that we're working on. So thank you to Mayor Marshall, Councilman, sorry, Mayor Pro Tem Lavelle, Councilmember Ponce, Dave, and certainly Carolyn Daly for helping coordinate and host all of these wonderful people to our island. In addition, kudos to Topside for allowing us to present in their facilities, and Catalina Adventure Tours for their in-town tour. Next up tomorrow, we have an all-hands meeting with Los Angeles County Regional Planning, as well as applicable county departments to review the comments on the environmental documents for the Pebbly Beach landfill site life optimization project. So things are moving forward, very exciting to have this meeting and discussion with all those departments. For the month of September, our reverse vending machine collected over 5,000 bottles of cans and had 78 unique users to the machine for the month of September. And then, last but not least, very excited to share that I've been working with Laguna Beach artist Casey Parlette. He's created an 11-foot sculpture called Epicenter. It's made of stainless steel and bronze. It's a beautiful public art piece where he's transporting it around town, excuse me, around to different cities that have marine protected areas to get the word out about marine conservation. So his next stop is going to be here in Catalina Island. Once we've determined a final location, we'll have an art opening. I'll be sure to share it with our community and with our council, but we're so excited for this partnership. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Any questions?
Good evening, Mayor, Staff, and Council. Kelly Robetho, Contract Planner. Just wanted to make an announcement this evening regarding the Planning Commission meeting for October. We had originally tried to move it forward one week to next Wednesday, however, due to some specifics with the projects, we are actually going to go ahead and move the Planning Commission meeting back to its regular day, which is the third Wednesday of the month, so it'll be on October 22nd. The agenda for that meeting has not really changed. We are going to have the South Beach Restoration Project moving forward. Even though we've moved the meeting, there will still be time to process the grant application for that project, so we will not have a conflict with that. We'll just be working extra hard with Aliana and the grants team to make sure they have everything they need to be successful in that. And we will have four transient rental license applications at that meeting. One person who was originally scheduled had been asked, or requested to move to the November meeting, so they could be sure to be available, as is required now for the public hearing. And then we had one other person who had voluntarily revoked their application. So we're going to have four moving forward, one in Flats, and three in Hamilton Cove.
Thank you, Kelly.
I think we have Matt coming out, yes.
Good evening, Council. Matt Baker, Finance Director. I just wanted to provide a quick update on revenues. July TOT was down 5.5%. Hotels were down 11.2%, but vacation rentals were up 2%. Occupancy rates were up 8% for hotels, but revenues were down because there were fewer room nights available. We have one of our larger hotels currently closed. What it means from the budget standpoint is we kind of estimated our TOTs to be down around 5%, so I'm not all that concerned from hitting the budget target, but we did estimate what we're likely not to see is our TOT exceed our budget estimates by hundreds of thousands like we had the last couple of years. But I think we're still on track, or we should be on track to hit that budget number. For July cruise ship and cross-channel warfage was up 2%. Nightly moorings were up 5.7% on a revenue basis, but after factoring the rate increase for July, they were up about 2% from a boat basis, if you will. Sales tax and ad tax were up in July, but harbor use fees were down. That, it's rare that harbor use fees and ad tax don't move in the same direction, but it could just be the cooler-than-usual winter may have impacted the harbor use fees in July. Finance is currently preparing for the financial statement audit, so I do have close-to-final numbers on a few other revenue ones that I thought I would share. Cross-channel warfage for the year, so that's the year ending June 30, '25, was up around 5% from the previous year. Hotel revenues were up 0.3%, so they're, realistically, they were flat. Hotels were down 2%, but vacation rentals were up 5%, so TOT for the year was flat from the prior year. Again, I'm working, I'll have auditors onsite at the end of this month, so if you see new faces in finance, that's probably who they are, unless there's any questions.
Questions? No, thank you.
Yep.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Good evening. A couple things, first of all, just from the fire chief, who is on business over town this week at a conference. I just wanted to announce that the city was awarded the, an assistance to firefighters grant in the amount of $230,000. Congratulations to Aliana and Chief for their work on applying for that grant and sticking with it. It's, we were, that was one of those grants, we shot for the moon and hit it. They, they were thinking it would come in less, and they'd be thrilled, so now, you know, they got the full amount they asked for, and this can be used for protection of first responder personnel against fire and fire-related hazards, so it will definitely be put to good use. That's exciting. And then the chief will have a badge-pinning ceremony this Saturday at 9:00 a.m. for the new, newly-promoted captain, newly-promoted engineer, and the new firefighter over here in front of the fire station. So 9:00 a.m. Saturday, if you're available. This week and next week, we, we have staff that are working with the 24/7 short-term rental reporting system, host compliance, they're getting, we're getting trained up on it, they're getting trained up on it. At the other end, we will have a internal test next week. We'll be putting it through some test procedures next week, and hopefully, if everything goes as planned, we'll be in a position to announce shortly thereafter that it's up and running and live, and we'll blast that number and that information out everywhere. And we are working with our, we're trying to arrange a meeting with our major short-term rental providers, both Hamilton Cove, CIBR, sit down to make sure we're all on the same page as we go into this new phase or next phase of monitoring, to make sure everybody's expectations are the same. So we'll keep council updated as we work through that. Jocelyn mentioned it, but I just want to, you know, give credit to her for the work she did for today's event, hosting the 35 folks at CalCities. It went very well. She put a lot of time and effort into that. I think it's a great display to put our, to be able to put our city in that role. People were very impressed that we talked to, and I think hopefully, it's something we can keep going or doing as we work down the road in years to come. Also, finally, just trying to see if I can bring this up, I gotta bring up my computer here. So, I don't know, Matt, if I have to do something to switch over, there we go. So I would be remiss to not acknowledge the importance of tomorrow, okay? Tomorrow, October 8th, is Harbor Master Appreciation. I know, I know you all know this, but, you know, in case you had other things going on, it's Harbor Master Appreciation Day, so please, you know, if you see Kevin out there tomorrow, give him a pat on the back, and, you know, I just want to apologize in advance for all the noise and partying that always happens on Harbor Master Appreciation Day Eve tonight. And, seriously, Kevin, we appreciate you, and it's kind of your fault, you brought this to our attention today. So. I desperately tried to get AI to create a song. It didn't happen in time, but the lyrics were great, they just couldn't put it to music yet, but we'll get that out when it happens. But seriously, we, you know, we do appreciate Kevin, and in honor of this, we did get him a truck this week, so his truck that you council-approved did arrive this week.
Oh, excellent.
So if you see a very bright blue, fluorescent blue truck, that's the Harbor Master truck. It's not subtle at all. Oh, the Harbor Department's truck, yeah. And we'll have a contest to see if anyone else gets to drive it, but.
Well, we're so appreciative of you that we're all leaving town tomorrow morning.
Right.
So if you want us to congratulate you tomorrow, you'll have to meet us out at the mall at about 7:30.
Right.
Congratulations.
And that's it, other than that, with the mayor just mentioned, I'll be joining council tomorrow, going over to Long Beach for the rest of the week for the California League of Cities, so thank you, that's it.
Do we have a city attorney on?
Yes, you do. I will be attending not only the league conference and see you all tomorrow and Thursday. In two weeks, I'll be attending the council meeting in person. We're gonna make it heavy with legal issues, so be prepared. And then I do want to congratulate my Detroit Lions for going 2-0 against David's State of Ohio over the last two weeks.
All right, we'll see you tomorrow. Okay, Councilmember report?
I don't have much, just also, like you mentioned, we're all going to be at CalCities, and then we were able to get the YMCA Youth and Government Program up and running. We have 10 kids signed up. We're going to start next Friday, and our first trip is the second week of November.
Where are you going to go?
It's called Camp Roberts.
Okay.
Yes, and then after that, we have Camp Oaks, which is the Campai Hill camp, and then February Sacramento.
Excellent. Yeah, that's awesome.
Nice. Sure, I'll go, I don't care. I, I got to, there was a cruise ship that was repositioning, and we had a little plaque ceremony out there. Didn't mean to steal your thunder there, Annie.
No, you guys, I'll just be there.
Yeah, so Annie and I and Kevin went out there and saw the ship. It was absolutely beautiful. At first, I was a little bit freaked out because I didn't know if it was, I didn't know that it was indeed repositioning, and it's one of those big ones, it's like as big as the Forense, and I was like, oh my God, we don't need another giant cruise ship here. And then they're like, oh, we're just repositioning. I'm like, excellent. So, so that was nice, but it was an absolutely gorgeous ship. And then I met with Dave and Annie, with Whitley Latour from the Conservancy, and she gave us an update on their, it's now not the restoration, but it's the wildfire mitigation program or something like that, and I was really, really happy to hear that they took to heart all of the citizens' complaints and concerns, and they, even though they did go ahead and submit their permit to CDFW, they are not going to be using the helicopters, sharpshooters out of the helicopters. They will be using ground hunting, but, so it'll take several years, and she said that they're still going to do local hunting and all that stuff, so for what it is, I think it was a good step forward, at least the helicopters are not happening. So it was a very interesting meeting, she was very candid, very transparent, open to questions, so community, if you're out there and they have community outreach, I strongly encourage you to go and voice concerns or ask questions about the new project moving forward. And yeah, so after this meeting, I'm packing, because we're going to the CalCities convention. That's it for me.
Because I'm short.
Yeah.
No, you're not that short.
Attended the CalCities group that came over today to visit Avalon with Lisa and Dave and Jocelyn and Carolyn. It's always great when we have people that are in our positions to see what goes on here on the island, and it's also good for us to get feedback from them as to their situation. So it was, it was, it was a great day, and anytime that I can promote my home, I want to promote my home, so that was, and I also attended a meeting with Whitney, so it was a good conversation. Yeah, so.
So yes, attended the on-island visit today, and will be attending the conference this week for CalCities. Was actually in DC for a work trip, but met with Whitney via Zoom during that time, and... And I second Mary, if you have questions, if you have read through the information and have concerns, please definitely just discuss it with them, ask questions, and find out answers to things that you want to know more about. One of the interesting things that came out of that DC visit, the first day of the conference that I was attending, which was for work, was an AI forum. And while many of the things were specifically targeted at how tourism and travel businesses or activity and experience businesses can use AI within their business, every single session that we went to, which I think ended up being nine of them by the time the day was done, mentioned having an AI policy. And I mentioned this to Dave this week, so hoping that we can either internally or as a council help develop an AI policy that makes sense, that is safe for employees to use, that makes sense when it comes to how we're using AI, what information we're putting in and not putting in, if we're using paid or free accounts. I think it's really important just to make sure that everyone's on the same page, and would urge every business that has people who may be using AI on your business computers or business cell phones to also make sure you have a policy of what is or is not okay. It's very easy, I think, for people who are new to utilizing it, to inadvertently share personal information, financial information, information they shouldn't be putting into an AI system that is there to learn what it is that you're trying to do. So just be mindful of that. I don't know if, I'm sure Edison probably has an AI policy already.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So, and then, well, absolutely, second, third, fourth, and fifth, the beautiful new delineators on Front Street, those look amazing. The first time I saw them was at night, when they were all lit up, and I was like, I just want to come photograph these at night right now, like, they're so beautiful. I think it's looking really so much more clean and classic-looking, and it feels like they've always been there, which is an amazing goal to accomplish.
That's what I was trying to, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then wanted to see if it was possible, Outlook still is the bane of my existence on some days for email, if it's possible to have a class or classes that city staff and/or council can sign up for. I just want shortcuts, I want to be able to use Outlook as well as I use Gmail in my work and personal life, and filtering out all the emails that I don't need would be a really fun way to start with that. So anyway, been trying to grab stuff off of YouTube, and some of it's applicable, and some of it doesn't seem to work the way it's supposed to, so. Was supposed to be attending the COG while I was in DC, and unfortunately, the COG building had an internet outage, and so they could not do live streaming, they couldn't do Zoom in calls from, from people. So that was new and fun and exciting. And then lastly, personal life slash city life, just want to remind people, I know it's not April, April is Donate Life Month in California, but we've had a family member who just received a donation of a liver and went through that process in what felt like a whirlwind of several months. I would ask that people in the community, if you have a driver's license, to consider when you get your license renewed, to consider being an organ donor, it makes a big impact. It is a little bit of lifesaving miraculous work, I think. So just to say that, I know we'll, we'll honor Donate and Give Life Month, but you can go to donatelifecalifornia.org to get more information if you have questions about what happens when that happens. But I would just say that it's, it's, it's been a really interesting journey, and would hope that people would consider doing it if they are comfortable, if they are religiously inclined and personally inclined to do so, so.
That's lovely.
Yeah, thanks.
And we had a busy weekend, as you know, the chili cook-off looked like it was a big success. I don't, I don't know quite who the winners are, but anyway, I think it was well-attended. The mammograms on Front Street worked pretty well, I guess they had a little power problems, but they worked it out and got everybody in there that needed to, or that had signed up. And the only thing that I might want to ask is if we can look at, as we discussed public art, and I mentioned this to Jocelyn, if there's any way we could, like a part of our, all of our permit fees or something, take a small percentage or find some way to, to increase money into that fund, because I think we have like five thousand dollars in there or something. And anyway, I think we all appreciate public art, so if we could look into that, that would be good. Okay. We're all communications, this is an opportunity for people to speak on items that are not on the agenda. You will be limited to two minutes, and no action will be taken.
Hello, everybody. Paul Burchall, Avalon Library. A couple of things, when we were talking about voting at the very, very, very start of the meeting, library has a voting box, vote-by-mail box, come on in, it's opened, it's emptied out every week, people from register recorder come over and take it away. It'll be closed and locked at eight PM on the voting day, but it's a very lovely way of getting your vote in real quick. It's banned books month. Come on down to the library and pick up a naughty book, I'm gonna have them on display.
What, banned banned books?
It's banned book week, yes. Terrible thing.
You don't know? No.
We, we do not ban books, but it is banned book week, so many places, they are trying to ban a book, we're not gonna stand for it, come by, see our display, it'll be up tonight, not yet, but it's up tonight. Please come to the library tomorrow. Tomorrow, we're going to have our Everything You Wanted to Know About Catalina But We're Afraid to Ask Talk with Chuck Liddell, Sandeep Hutnam. Oh my goodness, it's gonna be about the Canby family and their legacy on the, on the island, so please come to that. And then at four o'clock, please, please, because I haven't really heard a lot of people coming, I'm going to have an animator who's coming over, he's a former Simpsons animator, he's going to give a talk on anime and how to draw anime characters, that's at four o'clock. I know there are so many manga and anime people on this island. Last time I had him in, nobody came, it was pouring rain, nobody came out. The poor man had to come onto the island in the pouring rain, didn't even see anything nice. So, you know, try and come, tomorrow at four o'clock, it's gonna be an awesome thing. I've got so much stuff coming on. On October fifteenth, I'm gonna try and show a little movie, The House on Haunted Hill with Vincent Price throwing people into acid. It's Halloween, it's in public domain, doesn't cost a penny. I'm gonna just screen, I've got a little, little laptop, rig it to a projector, put it on my big screen, it's gonna be really fun. On October twenty-third, I'm going to have a magician, her name is Zany Zoe, she was here, I think, in twenty twenty-one, she's wonderful, so funny and, and bright, that's for all the kids. It is also our bookmark contest this month. I may ask some of you folks, all of you folks, I'm not gonna judge, to come on down and judge them at some point after I get all the people in, but I'm gonna have a bookmark contest sort of ice cream party on the ninth, I'm pretty shameless. I will bribe you with a free ice cream if you give us a bookmark, just draw the bookmark, give it to me, and I'll give you, it's not very expensive ice cream, I won't lie. And then on the thirty-first, come on down on your trick-or-treat day, and I'll give you a book. I'm not sure whether that's a trick or a treat, but I got the books on the cart, one year I did it, it's like, and the parents were all going, yeah, that's better than candy, but that's what we do at the library. Coming up in November, I'm gonna have a juggler on November twelfth, and a whole bunch of little programs, like how to make clay pots out of Play-Doh, really, for National Native History, Native American History Month, and a little lecture on optical illusions, all sorts of stuff coming up. So please, support your local library, and thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you. I hope you get a lot of bookmarks.
I'm getting quite a lot.
Oh, good.
Yes, because I, I'm not above bribing children with like, I got, you know, sealed bags of candy, and I give you a piece of candy, can I have a piece of candy? Give me a bookmark, so.
Yeah, you tapped me to judge a couple of years ago, it was actually very difficult because there was a lot of really good stuff, and especially the little kids, it was like, oh my God.
We've got quite a lot in that early school era age, still working on the teens, still working on the babies, but yeah, thank you very much.
Is there a senior division?
I, I think unofficially, yes. I don't see any reason why, if, if the adults wanted to do a bookmark, I don't see any reason, I would love to see that, actually, it would be beautiful. Anyway, thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you, it's always a pleasure. Okay, nobody else? Okay, consent calendar, city manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Consent calendar, item one, approval of the minutes from September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, regular city council meeting. Item two, approve the disbursements for September eighth, twenty twenty-five through September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five, totaling two million nine hundred fifty-nine thousand nine hundred sixty-two dollars and twenty-one cents. Item three, a res, seeking a resolution accepting a grant from the State of California Department of Parks and Recreation Division of Boating Waterways, Boating Safety, and Enforcement for the Equipment Grant Program. Item four is the Civic Center Housing Project, authorize city staff to publish two Civic Center Housing Project requests for proposal for onsite civil preparation work and for modular unit construction. And then finally, on consent, item five is procurement of storm drain pipe equipment for Hiawatha Sinkhole.
Any questions or anything want to be pulled? Okay, council, what's your pleasure?
I'll move to approve items one through five on consent.
I'll second.
Mine's neither.
Oh.
Oh. No?
Tap it first, Annie. Tap it first, there you go.
Oh.
Oh, there it is. Get the game to the screen.
All eyes?
Thank you. Item number six?
Item number six under general business, Kelly, as she works her way up, this is first reading of an ordinance to repeal and replace chapter one dash eight, reasonable accommodation of title one of the Avalon Municipal Code implementing housing program seventeen as set forth in the sixth cycle general plan housing element and adoption of exemption findings under SEQA. Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Kelly Robuffo, contract planner. So as Dave mentioned, this is essentially our next installment in working through our housing element implementation plan programs. Program number seventeen was specific to updating our reasonable accommodation procedures. So the reasonable accommodation process is intended to ensure that disabled persons have equal and effective access to city programs and services, and that there are reasonable and long-term modifications can be allowed to procedures, policies, and regulations in order to kind of facilitate access. The reason that this was included as part of our housing element implementation is because oftentimes, you know, a, a big part of the housing element is trying to get more access to programs and resources to our lower-income households, and many lower-income households have one or more disabled persons in that household that need additional access. So chapter one eight, which is our reasonable accommodation procedures, were last updated in two thousand and fourteen, so it's been a while. After reviewing our existing procedures with BBK, we determined it made more sense to repeal and replace the entire section rather than try to amend what we had, since the existing procedures kind of had some onerous elements to it in terms of like the application process, the amount of information you had to provide, it was, there were multiple different potential decision-makers, council could have been the appeal body for that. So rather than try to amend those regulations, staff is proposing a kind of a streamlined process that kind of makes this something that kind of is easier to apply for, no public hearings would be required anymore to ensure the privacy of applicants, and try to make it a much more flexible process for people who might want to apply for an accommodation. Just to kind of be clear, what sort of, what are the types of things people could ask for accommodations for? It can be anything related to our zoning regulations, building regulations, it could be access to, ensure access to city programs, like parks programs and recreation programs. Reasonable accommodations have to be their namesake reasonable, so the accommodation can't be intended to completely upend city policy, make it so it's a lot more work or expense to the city to do something. But sometimes even small changes or kind of a waiver of exceptions to city policy can make a big difference for people who have certain accessibility needs. And it is an exception, so any reasonable accommodation procedure or granted is essentially tied to an individual, it's not something that runs with the land, it's not tied to the property, so it's, in that sense, it's not like a variance that you're used to hearing this, it's, it's for the, for a specific individual, and once that person is no longer, for instance, residing at a property, then the accommodation would go away. To give you an idea of things that sometimes people get accommodations for, in my past practice, for instance, you might have a, someone who has a disabled relative who's coming to live with them, but maybe their house isn't accessible for some reason, doorways are too small for, for walkers to go through, you can't, you don't have room to put a ramp in for a wheelchair. So a common thing in the city I used to work in is people might convert their garage temporarily into living space for that person, because, you know, it's usually at grade, so you don't have those same issues. A reasonable accommodation in that sense, or for that example, makes sense because once the person, maybe that's like the required parking for that unit, so, you know, technically code says you have to have that parking, but for the, you know, the term of the person living there, it makes sense to allow them to convert it to living space, and once that person's no longer living there, it can become a garage again. So it's common sense, things like that. The new procedures, like I said, also streamline things, so rather than the planning commission or the city council making decisions on reasonable accommodations, it would be the city manager or designee, and if there is an appeal of the city manager's decision, we would work with BBK to appoint a specific hearing officer to hear an appeal that is familiar with this kind of, you know, reasonable accommodation law, rather than asking, you know, staff or council or laypeople to make decisions based on somebody's accessibility needs. So with that, staff is recommending approval of the ordinance, draft ordinance with findings for exemption from the California Environmental Quality Act.
So I have a, well, a couple of questions, I guess. I guess one of the questions is with our housing that we're going to be building, are we already making, like, some of the places might be able to have a ramp or, or putting rails in because I'm gonna have my mother live with me, I mean, are we, because I, I can't imagine, all of a sudden, they're in there, and then they want it done, and are we gonna be prepared in any way to do something, Dave, somebody's?
So I'll attempt to answer, and if I'm not, if you need help, let me know.
Super briefly, all of the one-bedroom units on the first floor of the Civic Center Housing Project are being built to comply with ADA standards. So regardless of who's living, they'll already be ready, ready to go.
Oh, excellent, okay. And then, can this, so if I have a place for rent, and I have a bunch of people that want to sign up for it, can it almost cause discrimination because it'll say, well, if I rent to this person, I'm going to have to make these improvements? Does that kind of backfire? I mean, you know what I'm saying?
So the reasonable accommodation process kind of doesn't get towards those sorts of situations, that's kind of a housing discrimination, you know, legal accommodation sort of realm. This is really specific to, you know, somebody who would individually want to come to the city to make a request for whatever their situation is. So it could be somebody who is renting might want to make improvements to the property in order to, you know, facilitate their being there, but it doesn't authorize people to make, necessarily make changes to a property without the property owner's permission.
Oh, okay, okay. All right, thank you, okay. Council questions, or what's your pleasure?
The only question I just had was the appeals process, ten days seems relatively short, is that standard for this process usually?
So I can maybe defer to Scott Campbell on that, but I think the idea is that this is supposed to be a speedy process, that if somebody wants, you know, within thirty days, they're supposed to get an answer on their request, we're supposed to turn around, you know, a request for an appeal quickly, and then within, I think, thirty days, we would schedule whatever that appeal hearing is with a hearing officer to, to make this a speedier process for people.
Yeah, this was designed because the appeal is not going to the city council, where we have to schedule meetings, we want to get these sooner, and, and especially given that the request will be someone with needs, so we wanted to speed up the process, it's usually fifteen days, we shortened it to ten, just to, just to allow this to have quicker, to, to have a quicker answer.
I, I think the only reason I was asking was because there may be instances, like I know for sure, when we had my dad, there were instances where getting back to someone within ten days seemed overwhelming, and having to go through an application process for an appeal might be challenging. Is there, I guess, wiggle room for residents, should they need longer, is there a way for city staff to grant an extension of that appeal time if they need to, I think is what I'm asking?
We could, and we could also frankly reasonably accommodate someone if they can't meet the appeal time, if they give us a good reason. So, so yes, there's wiggle room. We, we, I think we've done it in the past. The council, you could all, you could always just say that we want, we want to amend this ordinance to make it fifteen days, and, and we can do that tonight if, if you want to add those five additional.
Are you okay with the wiggle room for them to be able to make the choice if they need to?
Or, I don't know how many of these we're even going to get, and if we do have wiggle room, why don't we just see how the first one or two roll out and then...
Is that okay, just to get feedback, maybe after a six-month, I don't even know if you'll receive any in the next six months to a year possibly, but...
Yeah, I would say the two and a half years that I've been here, we haven't received a request yet, but you know, the idea is that the process should be there if people want it.
Okay. Back to introduce?
Sure. I'll, I'll move to introduce by title only in way of all readings of an ordinance of the Avalon, the City of Avalon to repeal and replace Chapter 1-8 Reasonable Accommodation of Title One of the Avalon Municipal Code implementing Housing Program 17 as set forth in the six cycle general plan housing element and adoption of exemption findings under the California Environmental Quality Act.
I'll second.
Second, call for the vote.
All eyes.
Thank you, Kelly. Item number seven.
Item number seven is a request of counsel to authorize the city manager to execute a purchase agreement for procurement of the shoreboat enfloat that's currently in the harbor and has been in the harbor. And I try to distinguish between the enfloat, which is the city's enfloat, and then the shoreboat enfloat, which then extends beyond that. This is a request that appears that it has been brought to counsel quickly, but this is something that I can say goes back just really from relationship building, well over a year, if not two years, having conversations about, you know, with Scott, that if, if he ever got to the point where he was no longer interested, not only in owning the shoreboat float, but the lease, which is, controls that float between the city and himself. And this kind of heated up over the last several months, and then really rapidly came to this conclusion where we're presenting it tonight. I feel that this is beneficial for the city for a number of reasons. One, mainly control of that space, the pier and both extensions off of it, ours, our enfloat, and then the shoreboat float. This is critical, important, valuable real estate that we have out there. The lease currently runs through 2030. There's additional extensions on there, so it could go even longer than that, and it's a critical piece for us to not only get the hard, the float itself, but the lease that controls that and be able to bring it in-house and have that back under our control. Now, if counsel authorizes this, what would happen would be we would enter a purchase agreement with the condition that we have the inspection on that float performed. We have somebody lined up that can do that work and provide us that information, and if all goes through, what we'd be asking for is, you know, you lock in that price, $595,000, and then also amend the capital outlay, so because we know we're going to have some maintenance and storage this winter with it. But I think going forward, it gives the harbor department and Kevin some comfort knowing that they control that space as far as how to make arrangements to be able to alleviate congestion on the pier through the summer months. And, you know, we already subsidized the shoreboat and those operations, so to be able to continue to, can have that control where they're going to be. We have other tenants that are out there operating. If this goes through, we'll meet with them ASAP to make sure what their intentions are going forward, see if they want to continue to be out there. But, you know, I think that this is a positive for a number of different reasons, and that's why we're recommending it, bringing it to counsel at this time. I would indicate that both Scott and Stacy Gorzalenko are here in the audience if there's any particular questions of them. I appreciate their cooperation with me and my staff going back and forth as we negotiated this to get this to this point, to bring it to counsel. And are there any questions?
So if, if the inspection's good and we want to move forward with buying this, so the lease would be, when we purchase it, the lease would be dead and the city would own it immediately?
The city would own it immediately. Essentially, we would get the lease back, since we're the other party on the lease, so we would get the lease back and tear it up essentially, because we would control it then. So there would be no shoreboat lease to an outside entity. The city would control from the beginning to the end of the Green Pier.
Then the shoreboat company would still operate and they would, the city's not taking over the shoreboat concession?
No.
Okay.
No, no, the shoreboat, if you recall, we authorized the assignment of the purchase of the shoreboat, I think over the summer, early summer. Our intention would be to not make any changes there. We're already basically partners with them with the subsidy, so we need this place for them to operate.
Right.
And then they operate off the floats on the Green Pier when the, when these floats are gone in the winter.
Okay, thank you.
And Kevin, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but if there's any, any input you have or comments, or questions of Kevin, I don't know.
Okay. Thanks.
Questions or comments? Okay, then.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Mary, why don't you read this one?
Okay, I will make a motion that pending inspections by city staff and a third-party marine surveyor, one, authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute a purchase agreement for the summer enfloat from Catalina Jetski Corporation for a not-to-exceed sum of $595,000. Two, amend the harbor fund budget, increasing the fiscal year 2025-26 budget allocating $595,000 to capital outlay, dash R and M, floats and wharves fund number 10470-dash-6504, and $60,000 to float maintenance fund number 10470-dash-5705.
And I'll second.
Call for the vote.
All eyes.
Well, harbor master, happy harbor master day.
Right.
How's that? More responsibility, yay.
All right. Item number eight.
Item number eight, right? Item number eight, exciting to be able to bring this to counsel. It's not a surprise it's been in the works again. This has been, you know, a long-time process to, to bring to counsel a request to authorize the city manager to execute a preferred access agreement with Magical Cruise Line Company, DBA Disney Cruise Lines. This is something that certainly preceded me with the, with the hard work and patience of David Kree, of talking to Disney 20 years ago and staying at it and staying at it and staying at it, and Jim Luchan took up that baton, and then I was just fortunate to be in the position when we're here doing this. So Disney, we were able to negotiate the terms of this agreement, which just briefly for the residents out there, it's initial term of five years with two five-year renewal options. Provides Disney preferred scheduling for Saturdays and Tuesdays during the peak season of the contract, which is September 15th to May 15th. So fall, winter, spring, Saturday and Tuesday, and then summer season, May 16th to the 14th, just Tuesdays. Disney Cruise Lines proposes to remit the cruise line fee in the contract, which is equal to the city warfage rate, which will be $7.50 come Jan. 1st, plus 20%, meaning they would pay $9 per passenger under this agreement. They also guarantee 120,000 passenger minimum in the year with 2.5% per-year rate increases as we go through that contract. Disney, again, does not have passenger ships in excess of, I think, 3,200 is the most they can get, but basically there are two 3,000 passenger ships that service the West Coast, and that would continue throughout this agreement. We strongly believe that the smaller-capacity ships provide a better experience, not only for the passengers, but for island visitors and island residents and businesses, reduce crowds, less congestion. It just, it just fits. We've learned that lesson well over the last several months. So this doesn't change the resolution regarding cruise ships. The resolution is still out there. This just enters the preferred access agreement for Disney, and it kind of locks Disney in with us in a long-term agreement, long-term relationship. So I'm definitely happy to announce this, and I don't think this will be the last one. Hopefully, maybe before, at our next council meeting, we'll have another one coming before you. So, you know, this is, this is where we're going, and Disney just happens to be the first, and we're very, very excited to be able to bring this to counsel.
Questions?
I make a motion to author, authorize the city manager to execute a preferential access agreement with Magical Cruise Company, LTD, doing business as Disney Cruise Line. Second.
Moved in second, and call for the vote.
All eyes.
Okay, item number nine.
Item number nine is seeking to award the cost of service study for sewers, saltwater, solid waste enterprise funds. I don't know if Matt has anything to add to this or not?
The city's currently in the fifth year of the last cost of service study, so every five years, the city does an analysis that looks at our operating budgets and our capital maintenance plan for the next five years, and then determines a way to come up with a rate structure that's fair and equitable for all the ratepayers. So we'll be looking to seek into a contract with HDR to do this study. We'll be going to council likely in the spring with public meetings, just so the public's aware, and that'll be the opportunity for council and the public to ask any questions about the findings of the study as it, that study then relates to the rates the city recommends for setting for sewer, saltwater, and solid waste. So that, kind of the process. From a timeline, our goal is to have it finalized before June 30th, so likely we'll be having these discussions in the spring, April, May timeframe is kind of my current best guess, so.
Stayed. Any questions? Counsel?
I'll make a motion to award contract and authorize city manager to execute an agreement with HDR Engineering, Inc., to provide a cost of service study for the City of Avalon Sewer, Saltwater, and Solid Waste Enterprise Funds for an amount not to exceed $68,530. Two, amend the solid waste fund budget, increasing the solid waste professional services amount, 13125-dash-5005 by $28,000, to cover its proportional share of the project costs.
I'll second.
Moved in second, and call for the vote.
All eyes.
Item number 10.
Item number 10 is Rio Mole Revitalization Project Phase One, remainder of the work and Phase Two Wharf Infill Contract Award. Mr. Greenlaw.
Good evening, counsel, Bob Greenlaw. This item awards a contractor Slater Waterproofing for the revitalization project phase one and the remainder, remainder of the work on phase one and phase two, the Wharf Infill Project for a sum not to exceed $950,000. So this is the first in stage zero projects that we previously presented. One bidder responded Slater Waterproofing. They were the contractor for the phase one work, and they did a great job for us there. The scope of the work is to permanently infill where the steamer baggage ramps were, and so those will be grates over there for, and they'll be an H20 loading, so we can put a heavy vehicle on the edge of the wharf from this point on. That'll help us with traffic out there, but it'll also help us for getting emergency services out to the end of the mole. And then it also finishes the phase one work. The only piece of work that we had left to do on phase one was right there around the crane, and so those grates, the edge of the wharf, and that deck, that'll all be done. So Slater's bid was $861,315, and we're asking for 900, not to exceed 950. And so the reason for this is a unit cost type contract, just similar to what we did in phase one. If you recall during phase one, the estimated quantities grew, you know, as we're underneath that wharf, trying to repair that, you're finding all kinds of things that are wrong. So what we did in response and prepped for that, we actually fattened up the quantity, so we round them up as it's going out to bid. So if we needed, for example, 100 of something, we'd round that up to 110. So the contractor actually bids on a higher quantity, so we anticipate that, so that's built in. And then we also added a 10% contingency. So that's what bumped it up. It could have been a $750,000 contract to 950, so we're not back asking for more money. We're able to manage that contract. This is common with public works contracts with estimated quantities, just like the Five Corners Project. So that's what we're asking for. Any questions?
Nope.
Thanks.
Counsel?
I'll move to award contract to Slater Waterproofing, Inc. for the revitalization project phase one, remainder of work and phase two Wharf Infill Project for not to exceed sum of $950,000.
For second?
I'll second.
All eyes.
Item number 11. This time we'd ask to amend the on-call consulting services contract for International Consulting Services, Inc., and Bob can give some detail on this.
Okay. Like city manager said, this item authorized the city manager to execute an amendment to the existing professional service agreement we have with International Consulting Services, ICS, increase the contract services by $175,000 over the 12-month duration of the contract to not to exceed amount of $275,000. So ICS is currently engaged with city staff with a lot with me, so, you know, that's, that's the engineering, part of the construction component of the engineering staff that we have besides ESG, which is our other on-call consultant. And so they're in mainly two complex projects with us, the mole, all aspects of the mole project, and then also for the workforce housing. But also they're helping Jocelyn on the landfill, certain aspects of the landfill, and whatever else that we can task them on, but we want to focus on those two main projects. So far, they've provided exceptional service for those two projects for us, and we want to ramp up, and we're expecting that to move quickly and efficiently through those two projects, we're going to have, need more services from them. We had an initial guess of where they would fit at 100,000. From what we're seeing and the type of services, the efficiency that they're providing, that we really need $275,000. So that's, and Mark Passivier is the president of ICS. He's here if you have any questions of him. Doing exceptional work, couldn't speak more highly of him.
Isn't he at the permanent, permanent office now?
Well, he actually is a resident at part-time of the island.
Yeah.
And one of the good things about also having him here, he's a resident, so he has housing.
Oh, I didn't know that. Oh, excellent, okay. Any questions?
Thanks, Bob.
What's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute an amendment to the professional services agreement with International Consulting Services, Inc., increasing contract services by $175,000 for a not-to-exceed 12-month contract sum of $275,000 for on-call project management services.
They're second.
I'll second.
Call for the vote.
All eyes.
Okay, item 12.
Item 12, Jocelyn will come up and address this. It's a minor or slight adjustment to the U.S. Offsite Agreement for the Civic Center Housing Project. As you recall, this was brought to you last spring, and this is to include traffic and logistics study.
Good evening, city council, mayor, Jocelyn Francis, Assistant City Manager. This amendment is to include a more robust traffic feasibility and logistics study to ensure that we can get housing, modular housing units from the barge, down Pebbley Beach, through the elbow, you know. So this will really make sure that we can, we can maneuver... is to include a more robust traffic feasibility and logistics study to ensure that we can get housing, modular housing units from the barge, down Pebbly Beach, through the elbow, you know. So this will really make sure that we can, we can maneuver that equipment through the island, so, yeah.
Well, this is the least expensive thing we've seen today. Yeah. I mean, I guess there's no way they could say, "I'm sorry, they just can't get here." That won't happen?
That's the worry.
Well, that's the worry, and that's why we want to put a little bit more money towards this Phase One. So when we return, our goal is on, by the end of December, we can give you a really good picture about this project, whether it's feasible, whether it can be done logistically and financially.
Right. And, and when they come through town, since it's three-story, would they be coming like that, or do they stack them?
They would, yeah, they would be single units coming through town, yeah.
Ready?
I'll move to authorize the city manager to execute an amendment to the agreement with U.S. Offsite to include a traffic and logistics study in an amount of $7,000 for the Civic Center Housing Project.
I'll second.
Moved in second, and call for the vote.
All eyes.
Okay, and item number 13.
Okay. Last but not least, item number 13 is a short-term rental application waitlist policy discussion. And, and what we'd like to do here is just have a discussion and get some direction from council on where we want to go with the, the short-term rental. And Matt, I don't know if we can bring my computer up. See if we can get this present. There we go. So we, we just wanted to have a discussion where council's at. We previously had this with the Planning Commission and got their input and feedback, which was very positive, and had some comments and had some suggestions, which we've adopted. So, you know, as, as we know, what we've done to this point is the city has, has done its legwork, identified we have 386 compliant short-term rental properties. There's the breakdown of all of them, the 91 properties that were grandfathered in, 267 properties by CUP, 28 properties with a business license. We also know that part of the new regulations, council has placed a cap of 410 units total. So at some point, shortly, probably within the next 12 months, we are going to reach that cap, and we need to decide beforehand what we're going to do from a waiting list standpoint. And so what we've done is explored a number of different municipalities that are dealing with this, those that have adopted the cap that are dealing with waiting list, and really narrowed it down to two options, that being the standard first-come, first-served waitlist, similar to what we're doing with vehicles, blue stickers right now, or what appears to be more of a trend now, which is a lottery-based system. And the lottery-based system that we'll, we'll discuss is, you know, annually, the city will make a determination, assuming that there are TRLs, the licenses available under the cap, or anytime when there's five or more available, the city will open up an application process, announce it, and open it up, and say, for example, a 60-day period to anybody that's interested in applying for a TRL application, 60 days, here's the opening date, here's the date it concludes, here's the application, submit it. At the conclusion of the application period, we will then determine, everybody that submits a valid, valid and complete application will determine through a lottery system who is going to be eligible to proceed the next step, which is going before Planning Commission to determine whether or not Planning Commission will issue them their short-term rental. So there's a number of benefits to this from what, the way we see it, is it's just not a continuous, ongoing process where we're taking applications into the planning department for short-term rentals. They're checking a book of where am I on the list, who's ahead of me, every week, every year, every month, these things continue as far as, you know, similar to, you know, we have a, a book that's basically under lock and key for the vehicles of people that have signed up for their, you know, blue sticker. We, we wanted to avoid that. And when we saw this system and started making some changes to some of the other cities, we thought it would work for us in that we control the process. We'll announce, and say we announce it September 1st, you have until November 1st to submit your application. We then vet those applications, and then we hold that lottery and determine, you know, if we have five, 30 applications come in and we have five openings, five of those 30 will get it regardless of, obviously, when they file. It's not a rush to City Hall. All, all of them will have the same opportunity. Now, what we feel, some of the benefits that this system would give us is it reduces that administrative burden by def, by establishing that finite window for receipt and, and tran, of those licensed applications. We have them, Planning Commission's accepting them, we know what we're looking for, they're not coming in at random times, it's defined, it allows them a 60 days, which is plenty of time to submit their application. It allows for all the interested property owners to submit if they want to. And we also feel that it disincentivizes property investors from purchasing properties and speculation because you're not the next one up on the list. You could be the, the first property owner, but you, you might not get the lottery, you know, you might not get selected one out of those five. It avoids the creation of multi-year lists that continue to grow and continue to grow and become, take on a life of their own. And importantly, it eliminates the property value increase for properties that are next or on top of the, in the top 10 of the waitlist, for example. We envision that if we had this waitlist and a property was on there, you know, that's quite the marketing option to say, you know, "We're next on the list, we're third on the list," you know. You, you know that property, all of a sudden, does that create more value in that property because it's there? We wanted to eliminate that. It also eliminates, you know, if you're number one, two, three on the list, and you start asking the city, "Public records request, I want to know who has one," and if they're not using it that much, then you start making offers, you give up your, you give up your CUP, now I know I'm moving up, you know. So it creates value in these CUPs that may not be being used right now, that somebody could come in and offer somebody a, a sum of money. We all know what this value means to your property, or you can offer a sum of money to get them to vacate their CUP, so then your next on the list comes in, which would be the first-come, first-served. We also believe that it provides us, the city, opportunities to incentivize long-term rentals in this way. For example, some of the conversation we have with Planning Commission is, let's say this lottery system, the way we envision it is, if we have 30 applicants for five slots, you have 30 ping-pong balls, everybody's name is on a ping-pong ball, and they get listed. Let's say you don't get selected in this year, and you're back, and you refile next year. So it's your second year, maybe, we agree to allow you, since you've gone a, a year, to another ping-pong ball. Let's say we can incentivize it by saying, "If you have long-term rentals or another property with long-term tenants, that earns you another name in the hat." So you, you get to give them opportunity instead of just having one out of 30, now maybe they have three out of 33. But it also encourages them to have long-term tenants in these other properties in order to get those credits. We think that this, this has value for, for those reasons, and kind of gives a little more certainty to both people and property owners that you're, you're getting it or you're not getting it this year, and then you can move on. And hopefully, if you don't get selected, you go and get a long-term tenant in there because you know you're probably going to have to wait a year until it opened, the lottery opens back up again. What we would do is, if we go this way, part of the policy is we'd come back to council and say, you know, "If, if that property doesn't get awarded a short-term rental, then we, we would want to encourage them to rent their property to a long-term tenant while they're waiting," in order to open up more long-term properties for residents. Right now, we have a policy that says it has to be vacant for two years without a long-term tenant before you can do this. I think this would work the other way and open more properties up for long-term tenancy by doing it, because everybody that, only a small percentage of them are going to get selected, and all the other ones have the potential to then have a long-term tenant for at least a year. And it keeps rolling. So the next year, we'll have more of these, and the next year, they'll have incentive to have long-term tenants. So the goal would be to create this, you know, maybe a rolling list, so to speak, of long, properties for long-term tenants, because we know we can find you a place for 12 months, but if they don't get selected, they'll keep you, you know. And if you keep the tenant, maybe that's another ping-pong ball. And, and we get to be able to incentivize long-term tenancy this way versus the sit-and-wait. Because if it's a sit-and-wait policy, you're not going to get somebody in there while you're wa, you know, while you're waiting for the next one to open up, first-come, first-served. So here's the first-come, first-served, you know, kind of pros and cons. I, I guess, I think you could probably argue first-come, first-served is, provides fairness, you know. If you're the first one to file, you should be the, you know, the first one to get one when they open up. It reduces that uncertainty of the property owners. Property values could fluctuate based on the length of the waitlist, we know, we know that. But, you know, if we go with the first-come, first-served policy, we would want to adopt some other controls on that, that being requirement for the property owners to keep contact, information currently with the, current with the city on an annual basis, similar to what the harbor department does with their mooring lease list. Every year, you have to, to stay on that list, you have to pay $5. It's not about the money, it's about the touch point of getting them to provide current information, which we don't have right now in the vehicle waitlist. We would want to clear up, is the waitlist position transferable or not? We'd recommend not. Waitlist position would be forfeited if the property is sold or transferred, so then it goes back to the new owners. So there's things, those are things we would adopt if council wants us to go with the first-come, first-served versus the, the lottery system. So, so really, those are the, the nuts and bolts of the, the two options, you know. Inherently, as we talk this through with staff, we like the idea of the lottery system for all the reasons we mentioned, and maybe council has some ideas on, on some, some other changes to that. But we're just throwing this out there, looking for some direction, and depending on which way you'd want to go, we'd come back in the near future with a defined policy to adopt.
So I have a duplex, but we live in the whole thing. But under the lottery, under the lottery, I could apply for a CUP on that property or TRL on, on one of those units, on the front or the back, right? And if I got it, and let's say I got it, but I'm still living in the whole house. Would I then to keep that, can I bank that, or do I have to pay you so much if I'm not renting it out, whatever we decided on to keep that CUP?
Well, so now they're TRL, you know. So it's a, the CUP doesn't go with the property anymore, now it's a short-term rental license. So the value of kind of getting it and banking it isn't there as much as you, you had with the CUP. But, but no, if you receive that, you know, our goal would be to encourage, you know, to encourage the, the use of that. Since we have the cap, we know we have a limited ceiling of what we're going to collect on these. So it would be, it would be to encourage that. But for example, let's say in your situation, you had the duplex, and you said, "I'll come in, and, and right now, I'm, you know, I'm going to vacate it, but I want to rent out one short-term, and I'll lock the other one. I'll commit to lock the other one and put in, you know, file a long-term lease agreement with that." So we can incentivize you and give you a, a little extra incentive to make sure that you have that long-term renter in there with the short-term.
But again, I want that TRL.
Mm-hmm.
I can, can I bank that TRL, continue to live in the house, and pay the city whatever, whatever, whatever that we decided?
Yeah, technically, no. I mean, right now, you know, we don't want people doing that right now, because it's, it's taking out potential TOT revenue by doing that. So that's why we increased that minimum from three days or two days to 10 days as part of the ordinance to try to further incentivize people.
Do I just pay you 10 days' worth?
You could pay 10 days, but, you know, the goal is to have it used.
I'm not, I'm not meaning to do that.
No, I, I know. I'm just, I'm just saying, we would, we would want that.
But that's the game people could play.
But what would be the value of?
Well, because when I sell that property, I have a TRL on it.
No.
You know, it doesn't transfer, right?
Yeah, it doesn't transfer.
You'll have to renew it annually.
Okay.
So the, the CUP has the value, the TRL does not.
As long as we're, okay.
So everything issued under this going forward is going to be a TRL.
Okay, perfect.
Right?
Right. And so then, if someone actually did that, it has to, you have to, your TRL expires, so you have to renew it annually. And with that process, that's not a slam dunk. You have to go up to the Planning Commission again, right, to renew your TRL?
No, only if it's under the new system, only if you've had violations under the new system, verifiable violations, would you have to return and, and be challenged. But if you have, if your business license is valid, you haven't had any complaints filed against you, it's just a matter of, you know, we will renew those.
Okay, so staff will look at that, though. So if someone did what Annie's talking about, then staff could look at that and go, "Okay, they didn't want to do anything," so can, can staff then deny their renewal?
I mean, if, if we can determine and prove that they're actually, you know, submitting, they're not actually renting out 10 times a year, and it's false information, and they're providing that, yes, that gets very difficult to do to, you know, somebody shows up, or somebody over the course of a year pays for 10 nights, the minimum.
Right.
It's difficult to prove that they didn't rent it out for those 10 nights.
But I think, I think, Dave, if I could speak, just if someone, if we go through the process and they get a TRL, just to be clear, that if for some reason, they're not utilizing it, or we find that they're committing fraud and utilization, and it's revoked, then there's a period there where, you know, they're going to have to go and, and reapply again, go to the back of the line, and, and if it's multiple, multiple violations, there's that, there's that rule we said, we implemented that, you, you're banned from TRLs for a, a period of time. So the whole system is to make certain that people are actually using these, because it does, we, you know, one, we have a cap on the number, and two, we want to make certain that, that people have them, that they're at least utilizing them 10 times to make certain our visitors have a place to stay.
Right. And so doesn't our lovely software system, our, our tracking system, isn't it easy to see if, if they rent it out or not? And didn't the governor just pass a bill so making it easier for cities to see who's, who's fraudulent, who's lying?
Yes and no. Yes in the sense that, you know, if the payments are coming in, and we, we, you know, you can show that it's out there rented, you, you can see that it's, it's out there. Can we tell that it's necessarily 10 times, 12 times, 15 times? It gets a little more difficult to really board on the exact days, because we get, it, it reports monthly. So, you know, and that was a difficulty before, somebody would send in three days of payments at the end of the year, and, you know, then you go back and try to backtrack, and they're, they're in compliance, but are they in compliance with the spirit and intent? And I think if, like Scott said, if it's fraudulent, and we can prove that, we'll, we'll pursue that. So it's not an automatic that they would get renewed, but it's not an automatic that everyone gets denied either, and they have to start over again. If they're otherwise in compliance, and we're seeing three months of payments, and we've never had a problem with them, no complaints, generally, we're going to renew those in-house.
All right. And I would assume that there would be a, a small number of places that would only be on the 10-day, on the minimum thing. So would staff then be able to flag those to make it easier to see if they're doing it, you know, just, you know, in a quick, you know, month-end, just go, "Did this address rent?"
Yeah, I think so. I mean, but, you know, a month-end, when you're doing it in January and February, you're going to have a lot of those, right? And then, so it's, you, you really have to look at the entire course, because some of them don't rent in the, in the winter, you know. They just, so we do try to keep an eye on that. I mean, we can, with host compliance, we can do a pretty good job of that. I think the goal of this system, we know we're going to have people waiting, you know, we know we'll max out the cap. And so the, the goal is, what do we do when that happens? And, and it'll happen. So what do we, what do we do, and how do we want to fill that? You know, the waiting list that gets created, or this kind of rolling, you know, annual lottery system to fill those. Because I don't think we'll have a problem, A, filling them, you know. And I don't know that we're going to have more than five to 10 open up a year. We'll have to see how it goes this first year or two.
Right. And, and I'd also like to clarify for anyone out there, too. My understanding is, you know, the lottery system, okay, your ping-pong ball gets picked, and so now you have a chance to go to the Planning Commission to present your project. So it's not necessarily approved.
Correct.
Right? So the Planning Commission reviews and all that stuff. So just because you, you win the lottery, doesn't mean that you are definitely going to get a TRL.
No. And, and our expectation would be, for example, if five were vacant, we would, the lottery would give us the ranking of one through whatever, because the first 10 might not get it. We don't know. So we need to know more than the top five, we need to know the top 15, for example, so, in case they do get denied.
And when I fill out this lottery thing, I have And when I fill out this lottery thing, I have to show that I actually own the property at the time. I can't just be, you know, like, "I'm really interested in buying this house, so I'm going to put that up, that address down."
Right.
And then if I happen to get picked, then I'm going to go out and buy it really quick. They won't be able to do that.
That's a great point, Mayor. No, the, the application process, because if you remember, we opened the 60-day window, the application process is you have to be the property owner, and the property owner has to, has to submit.
Okay. Okay.
Good. I like the lottery version. I think it makes more sense, and I think while, I think it actually seems slightly fairer than the waiting overtime process, just because everyone has an equal shot at it at the same time.
Right.
I think it makes sense for management, for city staff, I think it makes sense for a number of reasons. I'm curious for San Diego, I saw, you know, knowing that the, the main city that has the, has that program already in place, how it's going, and if they would change anything that they currently have in place.
We, we've talked to them.
Okay.
Yeah, and San Diego has multi-tier.
I saw that, yeah.
System, so, you know, and, and we have talked to them about that, and they speak very highly of it. They, it's a system that works, and once you get through a cycle, and I can see us doing this also, for example, let's say the cycle is starting September after the summer, we know, we have all our complaints we've received, we're able to document them, we're able to start the revocation process for short-term rentals. That process takes, say, from September through November into December, to get them through Planning Commission, the revocation process, then we'll know going into January how many we have available. Then we start the application process, early January, run it for a couple of months, and the lottery takes place in early spring. If we get on that cycle and keep doing that, everybody knows, expectation is, everybody knows when it's going to happen, we go through the revocation, through the issuance, summer, revocation, issuance, summer. That's how we envision this.
That was my next question, was if we could have it be on a standard cycle so that we didn't have to worry about people not knowing when the meetings were going to happen, yeah?
Or they're going to say that anyway.
Right, I know, I know.
I also think.
Anything we can do to eliminate it, right?
I also think the lottery system is, is better for the homeowner, too, because if, if they don't get in, I mean, instead of just wondering forever and ever and ever, then they know, they have a better idea of what's going on with their property and.
Right, they can plan annually for it.
So, yeah, so I like the lottery system, too.
Yeah.
Michael, you think it'd come?
I like the lottery.
Lottery system?
Yeah.
Everybody's on the same playing field.
I mean, we'll just fine-tune it, and then, yeah.
Would council be okay if part of this, if we bring an amendment to allow somebody to rent it long-term while they're waiting?
Absolutely.
Because I, I think the two-year period we have on the books right now would prevent that from happening, whereas this, like, like Lisa says, if you know you didn't get it now, you have some certainty. You might not be happy, but you have some certainty, you're not going to have an opportunity for a year, we'd rather not have it sit vacant.
Right, and I don't think we can force property owners to tell the long-term renters, you know, "I'm just doing this while I'm waiting," but it would be nice if they knew, because they always advertise winter rentals, remember? I mean, that used to be a thing, so people would know that they're going to lose their housing at some point. So I think it would be nice if the people renting wouldn't think that they was, were going to be able to be in there for 10 years.
And just that they understand also when, how much time needs to pass before they are able to remove them from the property. I think most landlords are knowledgeable of that, but just reminding them, like, "Hey, you need to give a certain amount of notice for this change."
Yeah, that's true, too, and then you've got the people that squat and don't pay rent, goes, "What the hell?" And it takes them three or four months to get rid of them.
Yeah.
Don't say that out loud!
Oh, I'm sorry.
But that, that's a problem.
Oh, yeah, I know, I know.
I know, so.
And I, I also like, I, I noticed, I mean, this is a little off-topic, but I noticed the other day, though, that part of our new ordinance is, you know, the, the notice in the window of saying, "This is going to go to Planning Commission." I think that is a really good thing to inform people around here, you know, exactly what units, and if they have a problem or a question, or in support of it, or whatever. I just, I think it's a really good thing.
Yeah, there's one, two doors down from me.
Yeah.
One community member did have a question regarding that, however. So where do they post those notices in places like Bahia Vista and stuff?
Yes, you know, that gets a little more difficult, because it doesn't get the general foot traffic, but they're still required to post them on the front entrance, near, at or near the front entrance of the property. The goal is to have the near, nearest property owners, your neighbors, see it.
Oh, okay.
So, so that's who we want to hear from. So, you know, it gets difficult, I mean, it gets difficult in Hamilton Cove because of the terrorist.
Right, right, right.
Way they're set up, but same, same way, I mean, that's the best we can do.
Right, yeah. Well, that's what I figured, that's what I told the community member, I said, "I'm, I'm pretty sure this is it, but I will double, double-check."
And we also get it out, you know, in our agenda, we post it, and we, you know, do the notice in the paper of these, so just, we're going to see these for the next six months of Planning Commission, you know, so just pay attention.
Right, right.
Residents, you know.
All right, sorry to go off topic.
That's a problem. Well, I think.
Do you have enough, do you have enough from us?
I do, thank you. Yeah, we'll, we'll go to work on it and put some, put a draft of the policy together and bring it back.
Well, now people, we'll be hearing this tonight, and so then I'm sure we'll be putting comments and calls and that kind of thing, which is awesome, that people get involved. Okay, well, if there's no further business, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Thanks, all.